We have all of the managers in attendance. First item would be the approval of the agenda. And first, I'd like to add for under eight new business, I'd like to add 8D, which is the governance manual notice for considering the amendments to it at the December meeting. Does anybody else have any changes?
Make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. And none opposed. So we can proceed forward. Matters of public interest. Welcome to the board meeting. Anyone may address the board on any matter of interest in the watershed. Speakers will be recognized by the president. Please raise your hand if app, if online. Wait to be recognized. State your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Generally, we don't take official action on items discussed, but maybe for the matter to staff for a future report or directly scheduled for a future agenda. So is there anyone who would like to address the board?
Yes, this is Tom Lindquist. Can you hear me?
Yes, we certainly can.
Okay. This is Tom Lindquist. I live at 16750 Baywood Terrace in Eden Prairie, and I'm a board member of the Eden Prairie Duck Lake Association. And I have some comments on the Task Order 46 work that's been done recently. I and my colleagues and neighbors are very happy to see that work is progressing on this. So we'd like to thank the watershed district and bar engineering for the work that they've done so far to analyze some alternatives to modifying the duck lake outlet that could, I think, to use their terms detain more water in the lake, similar conditions before the 2014 modifications. I looked at the draft engineering report, and I see six elevation duration curves that show very clearly how one potential approach, the outlet 1.0 V-notch approach, looks like it would give a lake elevation curve that's very similar to the historical observed curve. So my presumption from what I've seen in the report is that bar engineering also favors that approach. It looks like it would bring the water level up by about a half foot compared with just going with the 2014 existing curve. So we're always interested in minimizing the chance of winter kill, and this looks like it would be a step in the direction to get us back close to where we were back in 1998 when the DNR West Metro's Fisheries implemented their lake management plan for Duck Lake. And at that time, they estimated that Duck Lake's natural winter kill rate was once per 10 to 20 years. But since 2014, of course, it's become the rule and not the exception. So we're hoping that this will be implemented and that it will bring us back close to where we were quite some years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindquist, for your comments. I see another hand. I believe that's Mr. Cook. Would you like to speak?
Yes, please, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, I want to note that this meeting is being held in violation of Minnesota statutes 103 cap D. 311 due to the fact that certain managers were not duly appointed in compliance with 103 D. 311. Excuse me. So I want to say that none of the actions taken at this reported Board of Managers meeting are valid, and caution all to act accordingly and at their own risk. Also, I'd like to say object to the accounting. Again, there's continued violation of GAAP, incorrect accounting of credit card purchases, and that needs to be corrected because then the accounting statements do not accurately reflect the activities of the district, and it's not up to auditors to go have to go through and check the way you're being handled. In addition, I've asked for some information, but particularly explanation for all the expenses for staff conferences, catering, et cetera. Also in addition, there's lots of statements in the staff report regarding data, but I see no reports have been provided. If there are reports, requested to see those, and we should, you know, the public should be seeing those before and not having to wait until the annual report is submitted. That's a little late to take any action. The final item I'll talk about today is the Upper Lotus Lake project. Generally, I believe anything but controlling the rate of runoff is in particular a waste of money. We are not in the landscape and park businesses, and I've seen no data to show to what extent that park is being used. So we shouldn't be spending our money to make it into a park. Anything the city of Chan has and should be spending their money to make it into a park, we should be dealing with water issues. And to quote the manager Crafton about, you know, get rid of turf grass seems to me this project, we're actually promoting turf grass. Turf grass, excuse me. And I think we should be returning the majority of that property to trees and providing a carbon sink, a long-term carbon sink, and that that property deserves more trees than what is projected in either of those two plans. And with that, I will conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that concludes the request for matters of the public. Am I correct? Do I see anything else? Nothing?
Madam President, I am not seeing anyone else with their hand up.
Great. And then with a little change this month, what we've decided to do is to have our guests do their presentations at the beginning of our meeting so that they don't have to sit through vast amounts of data to have us finally get to us. So with that, I would like to turn this over to Heather Lau, who works for bar engineering. And she's going to talk to us about the Bluff Creek flood storage and promiscuous dump site. Heather?
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members for having me today. I'm going to share my screen. I thought the title was fitting for this. So can you all see my screen here?
Yes.
Okay. So yes, I'll be talking about, you know, giving a brief update on the upper Bluff Creek ecological restoration project and potential sites and limitations for excavating compensatory storage, which will likely be required for this project. So just a little background on where we're at. This project site is located in the city of Chanhassen with the Bluff Creek headwater wetland located in the northwest quadrant of Galpin Boulevard and Highway 5. The project will include the installation of an outlet structure at the downstream end of the headwater wetland. The purpose of the outlet structure will be to raise the water levels in the wetland, attenuate outflow, and thus increasing wetland inundation, all of which will help improve the hydrology of the wetland and also provide benefits to downstream Bluff Creek. Raising the water level will also result in reduced floodplain storage, which in turn will raise the 100-year flood elevation in the wetland unless compensatory storage is provided. And so we've approximated the compensatory storage volume required to result in a no rise of about 2.8 acre-feet. So and then just some additional items about the hydrology through here, the Galpin Boulevard culvert is actually the constriction point that controls the 100-year flood elevation in the wetland. So the compensatory storage can really be provided anywhere upstream of that culvert, including downstream of the wetland outlet structure. Some additional background, so we completed a Phase 1 ESA environmental site assessment for the site to identify any contaminants or anything that might cause a permitting issue in this area. We did identify some concrete debris and also a ravine dump in the upstream creek. So you can see a couple photos here of deposited debris and dumped materials that could potentially be contaminated. So ravine dumps are typically small. They can be pretty common in areas that were previously rural farms, which is the case here. The NPCA believes that they typically pose less of a risk, these smaller sites compared to larger old dump sites, but they may have debris with contamination. Things like petroleum, asbestos, or metals might be common. So we've identified two locations that we could excavate the compensatory storage that would be required, the 2.8 acre-feet. The first option would be in the creek just upstream of the Galpin Boulevard culvert. So you can see it's right where that dump site is. So the major pro of this option is it would involve removing the debris and the potentially contaminated materials from the ravine. As you'll see later in the next slide, both options will avoid impacts to wetlands. So the blue area shown here is the wetland extents. So this pink area highlighting the excavated areas is clearly outside of that, which is good. The cons, you can see it's a longer list here. The first one being that, you know, Phase 2 ESA to assess if the dumped materials are actually contaminated would be recommended. If, you know, we identified that there would be contaminated materials present, we would recommend coordinating with the NPCA's brownfield program, and that process could take up to six months. If contaminated materials are present, we would then need to dispose of them at a landfill, landfill which would need approval from the NPCA. We'd also need to include this as a separate bid item and additional specifications for just outlining the process of disposal. So assuming that the Phase 2 does not identify a wider area of impact and that the NPCA and process is approved and a local landfill will accept the excavated materials, we're estimating this additional work to be about a $30,000 to $40,000 change order. So that's the first site. So we remove the debris, remove the contaminated materials from the ravine, clean it up, clean up the site, but it could be a rather extensive change in the schedule and also additional change order costs. The second option would be to excavate just upstream of the dump site and therefore avoid impacting it and also avoid the potential change order. And again, there would be no impacts to wetlands, so it's just outside the wetland extents here. The cons for this one would be that the contaminated materials and debris would remain in the ravine. So if we're looking at trying to improve water quality and relieving the contaminated materials, it sort of seems like it would be nice to, you know, remove it in addition to providing the ecological benefit of the other items of this project. Secondly, there's always a risk of discovering contaminated materials during construction. But I do want to say at this point, the Phase 1 ESA did not identify any additional concerns in the area, and that, you know, it's based on a desktop review, based on interviews with homeowners nearby and the site visit. So because of the Phase 1, the risk of finding additional problems is reduced, but it's not a guarantee. So one option would be to go with this location, and we could do a Phase 2 ESA or do a subsurface investigation to, you know, assess buried debris, take samples of the soil and test them. Assume nothing's found, then you could just proceed as a clean site and it would not involve NPCA involvement. Another option, if you wanted to pursue this route, would be to rely on the Phase 1 and have a construction contingency plan just to guide the process of contamination were to be encountered during construction. The downside of that would be that there'd be some uncertainty on obtaining NPCA and landfill approval. So that's where it lays out the two options. I think we're wanting to get some direction on which one the district would like to proceed on. I guess, are there any questions? Anything that was unclear or?
So questions, board members?
I have a question.
Yes.
So it seems like there may be an opportunity to partner with the city or the county because it seems like the dump site is going to be a problem for them eventually anyway, and certainly we don't want to have, you know, contaminated stuff seeping into the creek and, you know, running downstream and spreading out that way.
President Pedersen, Manager Ziegler, yes, I could certainly reach out to the city. Just as an aside, the property owner immediately north of it did invite me out to the site. I met with him on site in September. There are kids in the neighborhood, and as you know, ravine is a wonderful place to play as a young kid. They did approach the city because of the city's limited scope of the project, they didn't want to go into that area. But now that we would be wanting to go in there anyway for compensatory storage, they may be much more willing to expand the scope, at least sharing the cost of it. The other part, and again, I would recommend a Phase 2. On this though, with the Phase 1, there were no what's called lost or leaking underground storage tanks or underground storage tanks period on the site. It was not a former dry cleaner or anything. It's a typical promiscuous farmstead dump. So I think the risks of finding additional contaminants out there are relatively minor compared to other sites we might encounter. But I did want to bring the attention that I did meet with people in the neighborhood, and this was of concern to them.
Any other questions?
Just I had just one concern is the delay doing the Phase 2 study, any problem with partnerships or anything else?
President Pedersen, Manager Nelson, and Engineer Sobek and Engineer Lau could add on to this. Given the timing of this project, we aren't, the Upper Riley Creek project is on a faster timeline. We really want to get that moving yet this year. Since we are not doing the culvert now, I don't think it would significantly delay our project timeline. I think we would have time. The only thing it might is if we do need to go through the brownfield program, then we'll have to go through that whole process. I did ask Heather earlier tonight if that would affect the modeling. It would have to be changed a little bit, but they're still trying to keep it below the 100-year, and it's still going to be the objective. With Bluff Creek, we had to get the no, or Riley, we had to get the no rise on, right? So this won't be as bad.
And then just the other thing I noticed is that the second, option number two butted right up against the identified area of contamination. So it seems like there's right there where that little tail is. And so that seems kind of a high risk, and if you did need more floodplain area, that's sort of the area you'd go to probably move into anyhow if you needed to.
President Pedersen, Manager Nelson, yeah, as Heather stated, the risk is not zero. And in fact, I would say it's considerably higher than zero that we would still encounter some. In just the time between the Phase 1 and when I was out there, more area was exposed. There was more debris that was visible in the actual stream bed itself, not even on the banks, so.
Yes.
So are there two options? We're looking at two options. So it seems like there's a potential for for issues with the landfill. Why wouldn't we try and figure out some way to do both, to do it some combination of both?
President Pedersen, Manager DeValle. Engineer Sobek, would it be possible to get the compensatory storage throughout the entire channel going back out?
Why would you just say you're sort of speculating on the risk of each site? If there is a speculation and we're going to go in to fix it, why wouldn't we try and fix the whole thing?
President Pedersen, Manager DeValle, I'll let Engineer Sobek answer in a minute. The hope was that by option two, we would avoid the contaminated and we could just get the compensatory storage. Once we leave it there, it's considered inert, and we wouldn't have to deal with it. It's like pond cleanup. Once we touch it, now we have to address it. Now, that sounds like a way to get out of doing it, and it is, but it's for the managers to decide if that additional cost is merited, given the benefit that will be gained by doing this.
Yes.
If I can just add as well, there's additional cost, but like Administrator Jeffrey said, once you touch it, you now own it and you are responsible for it. So that's where we wanted to present option two as a way to potentially avoid it so that the district doesn't take on that additional risk.
Okay.
From a resource management perspective, you're talking strictly water quality. Of course, you want to get all the debris and everything out of the creek corridor. But again, it's that risk versus reward that I think is at that manager's level of how much risk does the board want to take on. The other thing I would point out is this option in particular, and is on private property. The majority of this excavation would be on private property. And from the discussions I had with the property owner, they were very open to working with the district to allow the access, especially if they're getting this cleaned up.
Right.
President Pedersen, that's valuable, but if they're getting it cleaned up, I don't know if he would be so keen on having his guard disturbed if we weren't going to clean it up, which I can blame him.
Any other questions? Yeah. So follow-on question, I think I heard Heather talk about doing some soil samples on the second option, just to make sure we didn't end up halfway through the project or, you know, after we've already touched it, which isn't halfway, but, you know, that would, we'd own it regardless of what we found, and, you know, it might end up costing us just as much because of that. So is there, like, I'm going to call it the option three, do the soil samples first and get a degree of confidence in what we're going to do before we commit to doing it?
President Pedersen, Managers, yes, it would be to order a Phase 2 ESA and nothing else at that time. And then upon completion of the Phase 2 ESA, you'd make a decision what you wanted to do.
Do you have any questions or anything, Joe?
Say we ought to do it, it sounds like.
Where would the city come in on this?
We've got to ask.
Yeah, we need to, yeah.
President Pedersen, Managers, yes, I would ask, I would approach the city and see if they would want to participate. I know Manager Nelson has been waiting patiently.
Oh, no, no, I've just like, we're not making any decisions right now because we haven't started our agenda yet.
Correct.
Okay, so I think we've got Heather, we've got questions asked of Heather and Scott, right? Okay, so we will come back to this on the section of the agenda where we've got it set up. So thank you so much. Thank you very much, Heather.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is the reading and approval of minutes. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes. Thank you.
Can I second with, can we do both together?
Sure, sure. It's fine with me. Is that a, okay. Any changes to either of the minutes from the second or the 17th? Is this from the second or the 17th, Joe?
The second.
Okay.
167. Oh, it was just Administrator Jeffrey noted the statute or statutes. It's got a plural. Is it just one?
Should be just one statute.
Oh, we need to strike the S. And on the other one?
I'm sorry, what line was that, Joe?
167.
Thank you.
And on the 17th, page 2, line 21, summarize the district roles. Oh, summarize the district roles, that, oh, and response, oh, no, that was below, sorry, 21. List of items and issues managers raise, that need for earlier discussion as opposed to and need that. Just to strike and and search.
That's it? Anybody else? Hearing none with those changes? All those in favor of approving both minutes, say aye. None opposed? Onto reports. The citizen advisory report, anybody have any questions? Comment? Hi. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam President and board members. I'm Jeff Weiss. I'm representing the CAC here today to give you an update on what we talked, chatted about at our October 21st meeting. We had, we had an educational presentation from Mr. Jeffrey, but it was.
Do you want me to look? Look at you.
No, that's fine. But we, I'm trying to figure out my phrasing here, but I wouldn't really call it a presentation because it was a really nice conversation. Like, we talked through a lot of different things. We covered a lot of ground, and I'm not going to do justice to the conversation that we had because we ended up not having very much time for kind of a regular agenda items at the end, just because we were kind of deep in the conversation through a lot of things. But we, like I said, we covered a lot of ground, and it was kind of inspirational way because we were doing a lot of big picture thinking, kind of brainstorming about what different ways the CAC members can be involved in different processes moving forward, you know, thinking about different groups that we could partner with in the communities. We got talking about rulemaking and how we can try to be, try to get in front of projects before they get to, before they become, come before you, you know, as, for instance, there's, if there's a development that's going to be proposed, you know, that's going through the local city planning board and things like that first. And so all the plating and a lot of background work is happening before it gets to you all. So we're talking about ways, maybe how can the CAC help the watershed get in front of that and how can we continue partnering with the cities? I'm going to look at my notes here to help me out a little bit here. We were talking, coming back to think about groups that we could partner with. We're talking about groups like Friends of Eden Prairie Parks, Friends of Frederick Miller Springs. We also looked at, you know, how we partner with, say, like the DNR or NPCA for additional guidance and oversight. And Administrator Jeffrey also talked about some of the history of how the district either has or hasn't gotten along with cities in the watershed in the past, you know, how those relationships have changed over time. And I, for one, I'm thankful that the district is getting along with the cities quite well now, you know, because that partnership is really, really important, you know. Can't do, can't get anything done if you're working against each other. Let's see, what else here? We spent a long, long time talking about the rules and kind of the pros and cons of the rules in some ways, you know, like sometimes when you make a rule that inadvertently locks you into something where it's hard to have compromise and whatnots. We talked a little bit about how you might incorporate flexibility in the rules, but also the challenges in doing that. And let's see, what else? We also talked about, you know, steep slopes and real-world examples, high density developments on steep slopes. And then we eventually got around to talking about, there's a couple years old now, but a historic CAC recommendation to partner with other watersheds in the metro area just to kind of compare rules and kind of have some similar rules of different watersheds that would develop, or are also working together. But it's a great way to steal ideas from folks, and no reason to reinvent the wheel by any means. We, anyway, I'm leaving out a lot of details, but that summarizes things fairly well. We did not have any new things that we're bringing forward, bringing forward new questions to the board, and we didn't take any action on anything that was, we didn't have anything new coming back to us. So we ended up pushing off a lot of things to next month just because, yeah, we talked too long and we all needed to get home and go to things. I'll be happy to answer any questions you all may have or anything.
So it's got Minnetoka Creek. Are we talking Minnehaha?
In the notes?
Yeah.
Under 4A?
I read that and didn't even notice. Yeah, that would have been Minnehaha.
I've seen it that way before. Figured at some point it should be mentioned. I think it's just whoever's doing up the minutes is.
Right. It could have been a bad.
Spell check. Yeah. Anyway, I just thought I'd bring it up.
Going to maintain that. He's not giving it up.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a question, so you were talking about looking at other communities' steep slope regulations. Did you just leave it at a conversation or are you going to continue that?
I think they wanted to pursue it, didn't they?
Yeah. Yeah, we wanted to keep looking at it. I, you know, we didn't necessarily leave it there. We're, we're looking at different options, like how you, you know, we have the current rules for saying what defines a steep slope, but we talked about ways to redefine that. So it's, it's meant to be something that we come back to later, is the way I understood. It wasn't just to leave it in education, it was something that we want to revisit.
I just, I just, when I was on the CAC, I had done some benchmarking and others. So I have all these files or things, I just didn't know if people are going to be like, starting to look for other stuff at any point. So just be interesting to hear if you do.
I do know that Freshwater Society had a, their primary scientist do a report on the steep slopes in Hennepin County. And she identified all of them and some of them were in our district. So if you're interested in knowing where ours are, I know that she's at least got a start on that.
Do you have that report?
Do we have it?
I have that report.
Ten-year plan, there's a map.
It's pretty.
Yeah. And then in addition to that, President Peterson, Lower Minnesota has also done, Lower Minnesota River Watershed District has also done a fairly extensive review. And I see that as being a potential partner because, as you may or may not be aware, all of our namesake creeks terminate in their district. So they have actually a portion of our creeks within their district. And I think I ducked out before the conversation on the CAC. Are you thinking like some type of conclave where other, other CACs get together in some type of, was that kind of where that discussion went?
No, that wasn't where that.
I like that idea.
I agree, it'd be nice to compare. Our neighbors in Nine Mile or even Minnehaha Creek.
So when I was on CAC, I actually attended meetings for the other CACs for a couple of our close watershed districts. And that was very helpful, just to see how everybody ran things and what they're working on. And then I asked a bunch of questions that I thought would help ours. So I think they probably welcome you if you're interested in.
That's a good idea, especially since, you know, we share so many cities with, with Nine Mile Creek. That would be, that'd be really helpful.
Yeah.
I know my, my predecessor in my job is now in the CAC at Minnehaha Creek. So, um, so, and Noah could find out when those meetings are.
President Peterson, managers, along that same line, I apologize for that. On that same line, Nine Mile Creek is on the same schedule as us for their plan updates, so it might be a really good time to do that. Anyway. I guess she was in my emergency contact, that's why it came through.
That reminds me, you, Mr. Jeffrey, you were talking about the next ten-year plan is going to look a lot different. And I, I personally find that exciting, you know, it's, it's nice to, nice to rethink things and, and, and start fresh. You know, it's, it's easy to kind of copy and paste and, and update a few figures and, and, and things like that, but it's nice to, nice to start.
That's these people.
Yes.
President. So when I was on the, the tour, the city tour of watershed projects a couple of months back, I spoke with the new administrator of Capital Region. And one of the hot topics for her was trying to figure out how to integrate the CAC more in exactly what you're talking about right now. And the thing that I found really interesting on that whole tour was in the cities, they're all dealing with redevelopment. And, and I think our watershed is just approaching the point now where we're having to start thinking about redevelopment. So I'm wondering if it might, it might be worthwhile to try and reach out to, in addition to our neighboring watersheds, maybe some of the inner city watersheds as well. Again, there's a confluence of problems and problem solving things that are going on all the time. And, and I think the, the notion of how to utilize the resource of the CAC is one that nobody has quite figured out yet from, from what I can see. And so they're always looking for ways to do it. So this might be a really good way.
Okay. Thanks so much. Thank you so much for coming in, talking to us and giving us a little bit about what happened. Thank you, Joe. Uh, okay, so next we have the October staff report, the administrators' report, the engineers' report, the regulatory report. And I'm going to ask the managers, do you have any questions or comments on any of those?
Yes. Comment on the, the local solid waste management plan in the staff report. You talked about that, I think it was Chaska had submitted a plan for review and updating their H and H to include Atlas fourteen. And is that something that they could say Atlas fourteen or most current? You know, because Atlas fifteen's under public notice.
President Peterson, Manager Nelson, so they came in over a year ago now. And at the time, Atlas fifteen, we didn't know when it would be released. So that has been our comment back to them, that they need to update it according to Atlas fifteen. So their Met Council has also made that same comment to them as well.
But is there a way, and maybe that comes from our language, that we can say, even if they said Atlas fourteen or the most current? I mean, we did that at the rules at the Pollution Control Agency, alas, whatever was the most currently approved.
President Peterson, I apologize. Emergency contacts, I can't block, really. Yes, I'm going to actually defer to Engineer Solbiak on this as to how much work would be involved if every time that there was a new Atlas released, what it would take to update their full model.
President Peterson, managers, that in terms of updating their modeling, it, it's really going to depend on the level of detail in their model. It could be a matter of a few hours, it could be a much larger undertaking. Because it's, it's not just putting in rainfall data, it's what that then produces on the downstream side. Like Atlas fifteen comes out and all of a sudden it's not seven point four inches, it's eight inches. Great, now we have eight inches and we have to redo all of our floodplain mapping, all of our high water elevation. So it's essentially redoing all their effort. So it could be a, a big undertaking. But to, to the next step, it could, you could also say, you know, any development that comes in must need to consider Atlas fourteen or the most current. And then on a development.
That's what I was suggesting. And the other thing about Atlas fifteen that I think really has fit the direction we're going with the EHAP is that one has the climate resiliency built into it, whereas Atlas fourteen doesn't.
Correct.
And so that feels like something we need, should be working towards including.
President Peterson, Manager Nelson's comment, then yes, that is something we could incorporate it into our regulatory program that all developments need to use the most updated model. And we provide them the, the, the rainfall data and the temperature data anyway, so they use what we give them.
Okay. They're getting ahead on that one, I guess.
Any other questions on the staff report, mid administrators' report, engineers' or regulatory report?
Madam President, so.
Yes.
I mean, I get really excited when I read this thing. It's just fun to read, you know, what our different staff are doing, you know? Elena and Andrew and, I mean, it's just, but the thing that really, I didn't, I wasn't aware that we were doing this regional water groundwater. So that you've already reached out to all these communities and they're all coming together on this?
President Peterson, Manager Crafton, they have actually initiated it and reached out to us about this initiative that they're undertaking. So yes, the cities are, are spearheading this with the help of Met Council and DNR.
Okay.
Yeah.
I got to think that those workshops were careless to something.
Yeah.
That's great. Anyway, I just, it's fun to read the detail about what staff are doing and, and the reach of it, so appreciate it, thank you.
You have another question?
I had one more question. At the last meeting, we discussed the culvert at Galpin and you had said you were going to come back at the November meeting with an update on that?
President Peterson, Manager Nelson, as I hinted to in, in Heather's presentation, I did meet with the city. They do not have any more funding they can put forward to it. So they've reached, they ever are having their design engineer reach out to the manufacturer first to see if it's even been started. So it's possible it hasn't even been started and they can quit fabrication. And if not, what the re-shelving would cost. I did ask them if they would have adequate room to store it. They don't, they're, they're already very limited in their storage space at their public works facility. So we have, we are moving forward with the design without the box culvert in it. And they are still evaluating what the cost, if any, to re-shelve it will be.
So is there a decision from us still pending or is?
President Peterson, managers, what, what I had heard at the last meeting was to see if Chan Hason had additional funding and could offset those costs. And if not, then to see what it would cost to, to restock it. So I think the only thing I want to bring back to the managers is that cost of it and decide how you want to approach that.
Any other questions, comments on any of the other reports?
Or that's. The engineering report too.
It's the engineers' report and the regulatory report. Yeah.
I had a question on the engineering report.
Sure.
For the, oh, what is it, the Biolift parking lot expansion? I was, interesting that they had, the declaration has to include a stormwater reuse monitoring and reporting plan, which seems different than something we've done before.
President Peterson, managers, all reuse systems must give us a plan of how they are going to, to demonstrate that they are actually using the volume of water that they have been given. So the reuse systems that we have throughout, they do give us an annual report of their usage.
So my question was, how is that performance monitoring done? Is it like, is there a hard copy? Is it something they just write notes down and they send it to us? What does that monitoring report?
President Peterson, Manager Nelson, typically they send me an email that tells me the, their meeting reading of the volume of water that they've used that year, because that's really what we're looking at. Have you used the volume that the, the permit allowed? Sometimes it gets complicated if they have both municipal supply and, and the reuse groundwater supply. So they have to differentiate between those, but really it's just a, it's just the volume.
So they have a meter essentially?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Hey. Any other questions? Hearing none, I would like to entertain a motion to, you need a motion to receive all the reports? Do we decide we didn't need to do that at this point? I think we did, didn't we? Okay. So then the next item is, I'd like to volunteer to be the representative on November eighteenth for the next CAC meeting. Haven't gone for quite a while. And so now I can, so I'd like to do that. I volunteer. Okay, next item is the consent agenda. And I am looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as listed.
Great. Uh, any questions, comments before we?
So, so slight modification to adopt resolution twenty-four dash.
Yes.
I'm sorry, zero six four.
Yeah, thank you so much. All right, hearing none, all those in favor of adopting twenty-four dash zero six four, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? We're on to new business. We don't have any items removed the consent agenda. So now we're looking at the October treasurer's report and payment of the bills.
That we accept the treasurer's report and payment of the bills.
Second motion.
Thank you. Any questions?
Usually she gives us a little talk about it, are you, do you say anything about it or?
I thought we were just kind of.
Okay.
Expediting it.
All right. That's, that's okay, I, I've read it and reviewed it, I just, I'm used to you saying something.
Okay, well, I used to, I used to say all the time. Compliance with our internal controls and procedures.
Good.
To stump, to emphasize that point. I've, I've checked all the receipts that I had against the spreadsheet that Dylan so beautifully puts together and to go back and forth if there's forty-six cents off or something.
You have a question?
Madam President, just one quick question. I was noticing on the dues and insurance, twenty-six thousand dollar item, it was like a big bump. I didn't know what that was.
President Peterson, Manager Bell, that is the property and casualty insurance as well as the workers' compensation insurance through the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. We talked about it at the July meeting, that that was the, the bill.
Big increase over.
It, it's not much of an increase, it's less than three percent increase over previous years.
It's definitely worth the money, especially.
It jumped out in the budget though, it didn't, didn't look like it was recorded in the budget properly then.
I'll have to go back and look at that, yeah.
Yes. And I had one comment, there was a manager expense for me for four hundred dollars. That was for the registration for the Minnesota Watershed Conference, which I went ahead and did. So I didn't have to pay the fee extra fifty dollars for doing it after a certain date. So it ended up being less money, but it, I just fronted the money. So just, that's a separate line item that might be confusing. Thank you.
All right, so it seems like we have a motion and a second to accept the October treasurer's report and payment of the bills. I'm assuming we still would like to do that. Is that correct? Okay, so all those in favor of accepting the October treasurer's report and payment of the bills, please say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Great. Now we're need to, need to talk about the reinstatement of permit twenty-two, or twenty, twenty-two dash zero six eight for Kewachi Development. And I'm assuming this might be a Scott item, is that correct?
Peterson, managers, what you have before you is a request to reinstate a permit that expired earlier this year. They're coming back in because during construction, they constructed their stormwater infiltration basin earlier this year, let it sit all summer and it was full of water all summer. Even after it dried out here late in fall, water stayed in this basin. They went out and they did some site investigation, some reconnaissance and dug a test pit and found that the basin hadn't sealed off with sediment, it was still the soil that they had anticipated. But the groundwater was really close to the bottom. The seasonally high groundwater had come up compared to their borings that they had done a couple of years ago. As a result, they are asking to modify their infiltration basin and convert it over to a biofiltration basin and provide abstraction to the maximum extent practicable on the site. And because the permit had already expired earlier this year, they're also then asking to reinstate this permit to continue and wrap up the project. That are their questions.
So I think the short question is it's, it's now a restricted site and doesn't have to meet some of the normal requirements.
President Peterson, Manager Ziegler, it, it does now qualify for a restricted site because of the high groundwater. And they've also built some of the homes in there, so it's really difficult to reconfigure the site at this point.
Any other questions, comments?
President Peterson, managers, as an aside, we've had a few of these after the fact permit expired. So we have set up the MS four database now to automatically send out a notice to the applicant thirty days prior to the expiration of their permit so that we hopefully run into this less frequently.
That's good, like to hear that, that's a nice thing.
So one other question is because of the new permit and everything, they'll be paying for the expenses that we've dealt with and the new expenses now with the new permit and so on.
President Peterson, Manager Ziegler, when the board approved their permit originally, they were required to replenish the permit fee deposit. So that sort of reset the balance. So that sort of reset the balance. And since then, any work that's been done has been charged against that. And there's still money in that deposit to cover the additional time for this review.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the reinstatement of permit number 2022-068 with the modifications as recommended by engineering.
Second.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before we vote? All those in favor of reinstating permit 2022-068 with the modifications as presented, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None. All right, next item, which is what we added, that would be the notice about the governance manual, considering the amendments to the governance manual at the next meeting. So I apparently need a-
December 11th.
December 11th. I need a motion to that effect.
So I'd like to make a motion to include the notice of the government manual proposed changes for the December 11th meeting.
Thank you. Second?
A governance manual, I'll second it. The governance.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Government.
Yeah, it's okay.
Since it's a resolution.
Add a second?
Add a second.
All right.
A change.
I'm assuming we don't have any questions on this one. So all those in favor, say aye. Aye. None opposed? Next one?
There is one question I have is if, when we read it in the next day or two, if we have questions, we can direct directly to you.
Yes, yes. And if you want a printed copy of the markup, let me know and I can make that available as well.
Okay, I think I'll, now that you showed me how to see the stuff, I think I'll be okay with electronic.
Feel free to reach out if you have any questions.
Right, we're on to discussion items. The first one is the Duck Lake Outlet modification. And Terry, should I turn this over to you or do I turn this over to Scott?
We are going to start with Engineer Sobek, who's going to go through the technical memorandum. And then I will add a little color commentary at the end.
Managers, as part of the packet, we prepared a technical memorandum summarizing the work that we've done related to the Duck Lake Outlet potential modification. Little bit of background for folks, the Duck Lake Outlet was installed, the original outlet was installed and all big in this. The original outlet to the lake was installed in 1969. In fact, reason this watershed district was created was because of flooding problems around Duck Lake. There's a long history and connection with this lake to the watershed and to the port itself. This outlet structure was put in, permitted by the DNR, constructed. And then at some point in 1979, there was a request to modify the outlet from the lake. And the modification was essentially to lower the control elevation from a 9.4 to a 9.13 point two in terms of elevation. So lower that normal water level out there about. Now that request was put into the DNR and it was denied. Sometime after 1979, the structure itself did get modified. There are no records of when that happened. But as you can see by the photos, the structure was modified, that front panel was cut out. And then there were essentially catch basic grades that were placed around that outlet to stop floating debris from getting up to the fogged culvert.
So just a clarification, the grades were on the top of the original culvert, original box culvert. They were, they were there before. It isn't something new. They were on top of it and they closed it off to keep, so people could walk on it and debris didn't fall directly.
But the grate in the front was the control.
Well, they, the two grades fit neatly on the top originally. But at some point in the, I'm going to call this unregulated phase, there was a grate that was moved to the front.
So again, this is city's responsibility for maintenance. At some, in 2014, the city went out and did maintenance. They removed that old structure and replaced it with this, this beehive structure and extended the pipes slightly, keeping the elevation of that corrugated metal pipe consistently at what was there before. So they, they didn't change the normal water level at that point. The change happened sometime between 1979 and 2014. Maybe Manager Ziegler can speak to.
Well, there's a lot of detail in there, but you don't really need to. Outlet plugged and it flooded well above the normal high water mark. And that prompted the city to, to fix the outlet at the new lower level.
There was a large storm that came through and I think it was August of 2014.
We had flooding over Duck Lake Road and Duck Lake Rail both. So it was a bad storm.
So that's a little bit of history about how we got the outlet to where we are today. And we were, we were tasked with trying to figure out a way to change the outlet such that it would mimic what had happened before this most recent replacement in 2014.
So while you're scrolling, just to point out to everyone, I do not live on Duck Lake. We have talked about this with legal. I live near Duck Lake. I am a member of the Duck Lake Homeowners Association. And the homeowners association does own a small piece of land that has about 90 feet of lake shore.
Where the picnic table is there?
I'm sorry, there's a picnic table.
Is that where the picnic table?
Yes. And I am a member of Eden Prairie Duck Lake Association, which is a different organization. But I'm a, they call me a lake view mem, which is kind of funny because I don't have to. But I'm not on the lake, but they still let me join as long as I pay my dues. So and Lewis Smith is well aware of this and says that, you know, I have no financial interest in the lake, whatever. But I did paddle around this morning. So, you know, I, I am familiar with the lake.
Thank you.
You have been an advocate too.
An advocate for improving the lake, yes.
So this, this next graph that I have up here, there's a lot of information on it. So I'll step through a few things. Across the horizontal axis on the bottom is time. And it starts back in 1979 and it goes all the way through 2024. The black dots that you see on this graph are measured lake elevation that correspond to an elevation then that's on the vertical axis.
Spend a little time talking, but you'll see they're all random. And then here they're all on top of each other, so.
So prior to 2013, the district would collect lake level data once a month. In 2013, continuous staff gauges were put out there to record on a 15 minute basis. So that's why there's such a large density of data points from 2013 to current. Some other information we've got on here across the top, we're showing precipitation amount relative to the vertical axis on the right. So the further down you go, the larger the precipitation amount would have been on that day. Something to point out is back here in 1987, maybe have heard of the 1987 superstorm? That's when there was over 10 inches of rain that happened in portions of the watershed and much more so in Nine Mile Creek Watershed District. Couple of horizontal lines on here that we're showing for reference. The upper dash line represents the control elevation that was established by the DNR permit in 1969. The lower dash line represents that modified outlet or when that front of the box was cut out sometime after 79. And then the middle dash line here represents the elevation that was surveyed in 2019 for the replaced outlet. Something to really start to look at when we start to look at the observed data, it bounces around a lot. And there's a large portion of time where it's below the outlet that was out there. Meaning that it's essentially being fed by groundwater, feeding to groundwater and evaporating. The outlet essentially has zero impact on how the lake would have behaved below that elevation. We've got on here several different continuous on the colored lines. Those are model simulations. And what we wanted to do here is just show how the lake on a continuous basis, running it through a computer simulation would be paved, so that we can build confidence that the model can represent similarly to what happened out there. So we've got the blue line, the darker blue line, that was if we just say the control elevation was very similar to what the original permit was from 1969. And it's amazing just looking at that, at how closely it will mimic a lot of the data. The orange line is if it would have been just what was unofficially established after 79, that front of the box cut out. If that was kept clean, free of debris, this orange line would establish roughly how the lake would have responded. You can see it would be significantly lower than the observed elevations. So that tells us that there, there's something that was happening. It wasn't just that structure there. It was likely plugging and plugging significantly on a frequent basis. And then we also put on here the, the purplish line, which shows how the lake level would have responded with that historic rainfall data using the new outlet structure that was recently installed. And that really was one of the things that helped us calibrate and start to mimic all this continuous monitoring data out here, the ups and downs. We could mimic that pretty well with the model. Again, you'll notice there are some periods on the graph where we're saying the models just cannot really represent very well. And whether it's the higher water levels or even lower water levels. And that is that ground water, surface water interaction varies over time. And it's hard to get that variability built into a, a model like this. The other thing that causes some variability is the outlet plugging. You know, a significant outlet plugging where my cursor is here with no maintenance happening would have caused the lake to sit up higher. When there's maintenance, you can see the lake tends to drop back down pretty quick. And then the other piece is, is the rainfall information that we're using in this model is hourly rainfall data, but it's from the MSP airport. Because there isn't hourly data available in the Duck Lake watershed. So that was the closest source we had for this long of a continuous record. So there's several things here is why you see some of the lines maybe don't line up exactly with that, that observed data. So that sort of establishes, look, we've got a model. It represents reality reasonably well. And where it doesn't, we have understandings of why it wouldn't. Now we wanted to look at, well, what can we do out here to try to mimic that historic condition? So the first thing we did is with the red, which is really hard to see on this graph. Again, black dots are the observed data. The red that's sort of sticking out behind some of the green represents the model we developed, assuming that that 79 outlet was partially plugged. Turn again, trying to say, well, look how well it mimics. It's lining up really well. We're good. Now, if we want to have a model that can match that condition, what do we need to do? And that's really where we need to restrict the outlet quite a bit, down to a one inch slot. So if you can think of what that would look like, think of one inch of V notch with one inch up at the top. That's all the bigger it would be, saying that this outlet would have to be restricted a lot in order to mimic what happened out there. Which tells me that maintenance probably wasn't happening as frequently as it showed up. So there was a lot of debris frequently up against this outlet, causing the elevation of the lake to sit high.
Which everybody liked. Poor maintenance.
So in terms of, well, what, what does that really mean, right? You can look at the graph and you can go, yeah, okay, it mimics it. But what does that mean long-term for like average lake levels or changes in frequencies of establishing a certain elevation? And that's where we develop these, what we call duration elevation curves. It just, the way to look at this is the horizontal axis is the percent of time a given elevation on the vertical axis is exceeded for whichever model simulation we were looking at. So if we look at just the observed data, which is the black line in this area, we say, well, 50% of the time the lake is higher than or lower than what elevation? That works out to about a 9.13.6. So 50% of the time, the lake is at that elevation. If we look at the condition where just that 79 outlet was, assuming it's not plugged, you can see it would sit quite a bit lower, 50% of the time. And then we start to look at, well, our, our pseudo, what would it take to get back to that historic, what was observed with the V notch? We can mimic it pretty well in terms of most of the shape of that duration curve. Some of the other information that's in the memo itself is we converted those duration curves into more of a table. So if you want to just look at the 50 percentile, different scenarios, what elevations it would achieve, you can see that pretty readily here. And then we get into, well, what, what does this mean, right? Should we move forward? Shouldn't we move forward? This is really tough. This is a tough decision because we look at the data between observed versus changing this outlet and restricting it. Is it, is going from what's out there today to this restriction, which would generally only increase that average level half a foot? Is that significant enough to cause a reduction in winter fish kills? To cause a change in vegetation? And that's where we're saying some of those conversations should be had with the DNR fisheries folks, who are the experts in that. But I do know, and Administrator Jeffrey reminded me, that the lake has winter killed quite frequently even before the outlet was revised. And I think you have some of that information.
Yeah, so it, 1909, 10, 1910, 11 and 1912, 13. So the three of the four preceding years to that modification, there were winter kills on that lake. It is eight foot max depth, what, a 3.6, 3.4, 3.4 foot mean depth, 100% littoral. So yeah, I think a conversation with the fisheries would be needed. I think other, I think, I know other things to add into this conversation. I spoke with Robert Ellis from the city. The biggest obstacle is the railroad owns that land. And the railroad has said, we'll give you access if you forgive us all of our stormwater management fees, which the city is unwilling to do and I don't blame them at all. I would not be willing to do that either. The second one is the city is very concerned about a one inch weir and the maintenance of that. And that's a legitimate concern. That's a small. Weir and the maintenance of that. And that's a legitimate concern. That's a small, small, that's just one grate on those grates. So these are things that really need to be considered, uh, as the board moves forward. Again, tonight is just to go through the technical memorandum with you, talk about the conversations that we've had with the city. Um, if you would like, we'll go to the DNR, uh, fisheries and talk to them about it.
Then the DNR elevation, which one do they say is the official?
So. You, do you want to speak to that? The, um. The existing. Because there, they talked to, um, their attorney. And their feeling is that if a lake level has been. At an elevation for an extended duration of time, that that is the expected elevation. Now, does everybody agree with that? No, but that's what the DNR. So. Our original conversation with the DNR is can we change that outflow elevation back to where it was? That was a no, because they said, no, this is our new normal. You have to use that. So then the conversation went to, can we change the outlet to re- to restrict flows out to mimic that? They said, yes, that has legs. So that's where this exercise came from. I don't think any of us were expecting a one inch weir. To, to mimic it, but. At any rate.
And just one other question, if I may, with M President. Um, is there a benefit to the watershed district by doing this? Or that's maybe a harder question to answer.
That's a hundred thousand dollar question. I don't know is the answer to that.
We don't know. Yeah.
Don't know.
I would say that there's definitely a benefit for the fish habitat. And despite what. Saying with the winter kill. Um, a DNR. Uh, said and came and talked to the. Uh, residents of Duck Lake Homeowner Association. Before there was a lake association. And indicated that yes, Duck Lake gets winter kill. And they put it in writing every ten to twenty years on average. And in the last period, it was higher. After the outlet was changed, it's been every year. Every, no, it's winter kill hundred percent every. And because of that, the DNR stopped stocking the lake. Now the DNR has started stocking the lake because we had one year and we didn't have winter kill. Well, I was paddling my kayak around the lake January first. So, you know, if you have a shorter duration of the lake being sealed off from, you know, open water. Then, you know, probably the fish will survive. Um, and, uh. The DNR fisheries expert at stocking the lake wants to get, uh, Duck Lake in the. I forget what the, uh, exact acronym is, but it's basically kids, uh, neighborhood fishing. Fishing in the neighborhood. And, uh, you know, the lake association is very interested in that. And they're interested in improving the access to the lake along, uh, Duck Lake Trail. There's already improvement in the access on Duck Lake Road because of the bridge and the little fishing gear. But, um. They're willing to spend some money to fix or improve that access on the north side of the lake. This is all kind of based on there being fish in the lake other than goldfish, which, you know. Seems like they, they must recognize that there's some environmental improvement. And I'd say there's a lot more. On the engineer's report, it says, okay, the next step would be. To evaluate what would the benefits to the watershed be? And, you know, our, our responsibilities include, uh. Uh, flooding issues and, uh, environmental habitat issues. Which I think both would be improved dramatic. Rough calculations, I think by making the change proposed. You know, maybe it's not ideal, but we get, uh, flood storage of about twenty acre feet. Cause it's a forty-one acre lake. And if you raise it a half a foot, it's seems like logically it's going to be around there. Um, you know, depending on where they measure it, if they measure the forty-one acres. To the ordinary high level or the average water level, you know, it makes a big difference because. It's a shallow lake with, uh, mostly, uh, uh, shallow slopes coming up to the lake. But, um, so obviously there are some, uh, environmental. Uh, advantages of a revised outlet. How much it is, you know, I defer to the experts. But we have to make a decision to pay them more money. I'm assuming. They did a great job so far, but it wasn't free. And, you know, how much? Would it benefit and would it fit on our chart, you know? Uh, based on our current method for prioritizing. I, I don't know the answer until.
We could, we could do that. We have been, we could do the, the metric.
Yeah.
If we, if we can quantify it, I mean, that's really the thing is being able to quantify it, which is what he's getting at that. Yes, there'd be some benefit. What will that benefit be?
So if we could go back to the chart once the table that shows percentage of the time. Exceeds out like elevation, that's the one that has about. Um, it's on page nine.
Yes, that's page nine.
At a shorter table here, I guess, but so. What we're talking about is a one inch V notch. And I think that, that increases the lake level twenty percent greater for a six inch gain.
Is that? Half the time.
Half the time, roughly half the time for, for, uh. For a six inch gain. So I, again, I'm trying to figure out how to quantify this at all. And, and is there association? Is there a association fee at all on the, on the Duck Lake? Just to be part of the association?
Um, yeah, it's like fifty bucks a year.
So is there, is there a notion of what it costs to maintain this V notch? I mean, is that like somebody going there once a week? Or after a rainfall or what does it mean? What is the cost of maintaining that? The what, the V notch?
I think, man, you said that the city would do that and that they didn't want to.
So President Pedersen managers, um.
You could do that on your lunch break, right?
One of the things that the district is trying to do is not become an MS four perma T. And if we own storm sewer infrastructure, we will become an MS four perma T, which will. I won't say exponentially, but will significantly increase our expenses and our, um, staff costs. So the city would have to maintain it.
So it's sort of like testing. And the other example we were looking at, if you test it and find something, you own it?
No.
Kind of, but no, this is one where, where if. If the city didn't want to maintain it, but we still wanted to build it, we would have to take ownership of it.
Okay.
And it wouldn't be, it would be a JPA, basically saying a joint powers agreement, saying that we are responsible for the maintenance of that, which is not out of the question.
But a slippery slope of sorts.
Yeah.
Well, but the other question is, how are we going to get access to build it when? Right. We don't get the okay from the railroad that owns the property, the only way we could get to it. Uh, there's no way we can say to the city, oh, uh, okay, they're not going to pay any permitting fees. No, come on, we can't do that.
They'd offer us the same deal, right?
We can't compel the city to do that. If we did, it would erode a lot of relationships. Now that doesn't mean we can't approach the railroad separately. And, and start that process. I really don't want to do that, but I, I will. I mean, just because it is a very painful process working with railroad authority. Very painful process. There's no reason to rather work with less.
Seems like there's a lot of this.
Yes. Uh, the other thing I think of is that, um, so I'm on Silver Lake. And we have a somewhat similar issue with the, we're there. What's happening is. We counted on the beavers to plug up our weir in order to keep the height of our water. And now they're doing a very good job of. Cleaning the beavers out. They've blown them up as a matter of fact, the last couple of years. And so the levels have been so low, no one could get out into the lake anymore. All their docks don't extend into it. So if we do, we could do this for Duck Lake, then how could we not? Have to consider doing that for silver. It's the same. You know, what? How do we do it for one and not the other? And we can't get onto the land to make the change and it's only a one inch notch. I. I just don't know. That's a toughie. We keep praying for.
Yeah, at this point, it's just a discussion. We wanted to present the technical memorandum to the board. Uh, let's see if there's.
In our, if we did decide it was possible. Funny, the railroad wasn't a problem at all when the city.
They just did it.
They just did it.
None of us were a problem.
Yeah, and they didn't have any planning ahead of time. They just did it.
Yeah.
During the flood.
Um. President Pedersen, Manager Ziegler, do you? Know the person that you were at the DNR that you were talking to or that the association was talking to about the fishing program?
I have his card somewhere.
If you can find it and get that to me, I can. If the board would like, I can reach out to the DNR and, and see if there's any potential for partnership, given their long-term plans.
He's supposed to come to the next, uh, lake association meeting.
Good.
Why don't we, uh, proceed and I can maybe give you his contact information. Right after the meeting.
Okay, so I did, I don't know if we as a board have asked him to, to do the scoring for the project. I think that's good information. You're going to do that, the scoring for this project, if it were, if we were to do this, what, what would the score be for it?
Yeah, we can score that project.
Thank you. Thank you.
If the score is too low, then you are already.
Already, yeah, yeah.
Off the rails.
Yeah, yeah. Just a good piece of information before a decision is made.
Right.
Engineer Solbiak, we did, you only modeled the lake condition, correct? Not any of the downstream. Okay.
Okay, I see that the downstream effect is, I mean, it goes to purgatory creek that this is, uh. I'm going to say less than one percent of the water that goes to purgatory creek at that point. So it, it's going to be nothing.
Um, I just heard from audience members, they're having a little problem hearing some of us. So if we could just speak up a little.
Thank you.
Where's our microphones on?
Mine done.
This one.
Did I?
Aha, no under way.
Ah. I think the managers are more important to hear than me.
I'll put it in between us, David.
He's good. He's good now. Okay, I think we've discussed Duck Lake outlet modification and we're on to Mennois resolutions discussion. Is that you, Terry?
President Pedersen, Managers, actually Counsel Welch, um. We just wanted to bring up to speed. So there is the chloride. Uh, resolution that's going before, uh, Mennois. That has been authored by Smith Partners. Um, when we met with the administrators, there was some concern amongst the outstate folks about. New rules. The way this resolution is written is it's intentional to not have specific language as to what the rule would be. So the point is just to move forward with. Uh, and, and Mr. Smith might be able to speak to it better, but just to move forward with. We need a regulatory approach to this as well as an educational approach to it. And we can work through what that would be, um, at that time. Mr. Smith, did I capture that adequately to your understanding?
Tell him we can't hear him again. Can't hear you.
He's, he's looking, he's working on, he's working on.
He knows.
Do we still have?
Microphone is showing as muted. Okay, well, he shook his head, yes. Then the other are, are two resolutions, one for us to be a member of the, of the WACAT. And, um. For the, um. When a local newspaper is not available to be able to utilize, uh, internet or other resources to, to notice things. There is an additional five or six resolutions coming from. Um, Maury, what's Maury's water? Yellow Medicine? Yeah.
Middle State Tamarack, I think.
Thank you. Um, those are a little, um. Confusing to say the least. I have asked. Uh, Smith Partners to read through them a little bit. Hopefully they can give me. Their take on it prior to that. So those are the resolutions that are before. And then, um, Shell Rock has, uh, resolution to streamline. The EAW process, because every year that they've dredged their lake, they've had to go back through the entire EAW process. There's no. The DNR doesn't have a date by which they have to make a decision. So it's been, so that's really what they're looking for is an actual. You have a hundred days to make a decision type of thing. So those are the resolutions. Um, I believe Managers Ziegler and Manager Crafton are, are delegates. Manager DeVal is the alternate. I sent you all the packet again today, the business packet. If you did not receive it, or if there's things you were missing, please let me know and I will get that to you. Any questions on those resolutions? Otherwise, that's really all I wanted to do. Yeah.
I think the one on the notification is a. Is a result of what's going on at the drainage work group because, um. Scots friends are going after our drainage authorities, which are county and watershed districts. And. When they start a process, they have to notify the DNR and then. But they, they're being pushed to do a digital, whatever, something kind of, anyway, some kind of a notification. So what Jan said at the last meeting, I think, was that when she was summarizing some of this was that. I don't know. There's what? How many? At least fifty different places. It sounded like. In statute, on different ways that notification's done. So they're trying to figure out how to come up with. That's why the, that's, that's what I think is behind this because. A lot of the smaller newspapers like ours are, are going away. So what? What do we put in place? I mean, it's really important if they have to notify people on. Ditches or anything else that. A project that, that they have to let the public know about.
Uh, President Pedersen, Manager Crafton actually reminded me of two other things. One is, well, they're both the same thing. In both cases, outstate actually, um, wanted it to apply to them. So even the being a member of the WACAT, outstate wants that same thing as well. So originally we wrote the WACA resolution just to be applying to the metro area. But after meeting with, um, the Minnesota watershed administrators, outstate felt that they needed that as well. So. That's the change in case. It hasn't made on the resolution, just when you get to that.
Anybody have any other questions or comments about that? Apparently not. If, if we have time, a quick question, the hundred day.
If, if we have time, a quick question, the 100-day limit for DNR, is that something that was, DNR said they thought they could meet at all? You know anything?
I don't know what their, their, their conversation, and I don't even know if it was 100 days. I just threw a number out.
All right.
Wants a date. You have to, you have to have a date by which you make a decision.
Just my comment on that is they did that to the program I was in, and that meant everything got returned then, instead of working with you collaboratively. So it did, it actually extended the times that it took to issue things, because, yeah, so it was, it's just interesting.
But what they're running into is millions of dollars of extra cost, not just.
I understand.
Yeah, so.
I, I understand.
Well, and then change attending those drainage conservation, you know, annual meeting. I mean, I remember years where, like one year Phil Delphiori came up, and they had started a program, a project, a ditch problem. And then DNR decided, whatever the constraints were for doing that, they didn't like that, they switched it out and sent him a different letter and gave him different assumptions, and Phil was, he really got into it with Boris Steve Cohen, COVID, but it's just.
Yeah, if you read through, um, Andy, um, from Shell Rock did a really good job of laying out the background for it, so, um, those resolutions should be in that business packet, so I'll read through that. But that's what I had on the resolutions.
Okay, before we go into the update on the LAK versus Riley, I need to ask, is there anything else you need to do on the Bluff Creek dump site? Because we did not have that back on here again under.
Do not have it back on tonight.
Is this coming back in December?
Should probably act on that. No, it's coming back in December. It has to at this point, yeah.
Okay.
It'll come back in December.
All right, everybody, at least you got the report on it. Okay, ask Lewis. Mr. Smith?
Can we amend the agenda at this point or not?
I'm sorry, Mr. Jeffrey?
Can we amend the agenda at this point to direct our, well, we don't even have a task order though, never mind.
Okay.
I don't think you have a position, yeah.
Okay, okay, so then our next item is the update on the two lawsuits.
President Pedersen.
Yes, yes.
One quick question.
Yes.
Would the board like us to prepare a task order?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Good question.
And I think clearly all of us were very interested in having that site cleaned up and not just, well, we'll just move over to this area and leave this area. That was clear, all of us were not in favor of that one, so however you end up doing that, if you start over here and then test while you're doing over here because you have to, we'll leave that to you to come up with.
Bring the task order back.
All right.
At December 11.
Okay, sorry about that. Now, on to the lawsuits. What would you like us to do? Do we need to go into closed session, Mr. Smith?
We're going to put, whoops, go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Madam President, I would recommend that the board go into closed session for the purpose of receiving confidential legal advice concerning litigation strategy in two lawsuits. The first lawsuit is Larry Cook against Bryce Creek, excuse me, Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District and Terry Jeffrey. This concerns the Spring Road Conservation Project. And the second lawsuit is Larry Cook versus Carver County, Hennepin County, uh, the district, and Managers Crafton and Nelson, as well as other parties. And that concerns the appointment process for the most recent appointments.
Okay, at this point, would you like to have us move, or?
Yes, to move into closed session. We'll put everybody into a waiting room. We'll stay in this area.
Okay. I need a motion from a board member to.
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session to receive confidential legal advice on these two lawsuits.
Second. Good. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? We're ready to go.
Okay. I attended the Minnesota Water Resource Conference, uh, last month, and they had the record turnout there. Of all the conferences they've had, over 900 people were there from all over the place. Uh, central theme was climate change and resilient themes throughout all the presentations. Um, I managed to get a link to all the abstracts, there's about 70 or 80 papers, and I sent that to Terry, I believe. So if I didn't, I can resend it. So if anybody wants to go through that and see if there's any interesting topics. And then lastly, the luncheon session was given by, on the second day, by Matthew Ray. He's the Director of Strategic Partnerships at the Nature Conservancy, and he's a, he's a high-tech guy from one of the Google or Amazon or something like that, and he's putting together a theme that's collecting data on hybrid analytics and network infrastructure. He said that the research they've done already, that 90% of all the data collected on anything to do with climate and water has, has taken place in the last two years. And he said it's just a mountain and mountain of data, and they're, and so part of what they're doing is to, is to, uh, figure out where it all is, and then figure out the algorithms, and using all the techniques that they can find to pull that together and figure out some way to, to utilize it, because it, the data is everywhere now, and it's being collected by everybody. So if we, we want to get everybody to not reinvent every wheel, we need to figure out a way to share this information. Anyways, it was a really interesting topic.
Just add to that topic, they were actually mirroring the watershed, like what you get from modeling and monitoring and making an AI version of it, so you could just tweak it without having to rerun all the models. And they're doing that right now in Indiana, I think it is, but they're actually working on doing this work right now.
President Pedersen.
Yes.
I just want to know if Manager Duval shared his thought map with him as a way to.
Uh, any other comments from any of the members?
I will add, I did, I also went to the Minnesota Watershed Conference, and I don't have the name of the woman, but she gave a conversation, a discussion on salinity and what happens in lakes when they stop turning over, kind of with the data and on the, and she said she'd be willing to come, talk to our CAC and give a presentation. So I still have to get her information, but she was a really good speaker.
So I was at a Bowser meeting, and, um, Steve Robertson came up and said that he had, I don't know if he saw it, it sounded like he heard about it, but anyway, the presentation that, that President Terry did on EF kind of stuff, he wanted to know about that, so he had me contact Terry and send him the information, but he wants to, Harvard Health evidently is doing integrated water management planning, and so he was very interested in learning about what we're trying to do. Anyway, I just thought that was.
Yeah, and he has reached out to me and, we're like, oh.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Uh, it looks like we have quite a few topics, but I think generally, I should say, we'll all see each other at the conference. That's the next time we're going to be together. Uh, and at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Okay.
I'll second.
And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And none opposed, thank you so much. Thank you all so much for coming tonight. It's, it's a pleasure.
Thanks, Louis.
Thanks, Louis.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.